We're live and now recording.
Okay, start with real popping.
Yes, absolutely. Mr. Antonio.
Here.
Mr. Badger.
Here.
Mr. Bleefeld.
Here.
Ms. Chiyabachi.
Yeah.
Mr. Golson.
Here.
Ms. Keryanakis.
Here.
Dr. Morris.
Here.
Mr. Walker.
Here.
Mrs. Ginser.
Here.
Miana Bananas.
Here.
Isabel DeCosta.
Here.
We have nine present, zero absent, and two student representatives.
Great, thank you. Uh, will everybody please join me for the pledge of allegiance? I'm gonna welcome all of our guests and visitors this evening. If you take a look at our agenda, you'll see our prior meetings. We had a meeting on August nineteenth, and then on September twenty-third, we had our curriculum and technology committee meeting. And then we list out our upcoming meetings. On October seventh, we'll start the evening with our communications committee meeting, followed by our regular public board meeting. On October fourteenth will be our racial equity oversight committee. On October twenty-first, health, wellness, and safety, as well as policy committee meeting. October twenty-eighth will be our work session. And November fourth is our regular public board meeting. All right, next up is for our presentations. And we have our Wissahicken High School monthly highlights.
So first off, to start off, our school-wide academic-related events. We have the upcoming PSAT and pre-ACT testing for eleventh and tenth graders on October sixteenth. The PACT is for the eleventh graders and the PACTs for the tenth graders, which both are digital this year. No eleventh, I'm sorry, no ninth and twelfth graders will be coming in at normal time. They will have a late arrival. We have our Star's tutoring program after school, during study hall, and during IE, which is one-to-one student-driven tutoring. We have our math lab, which is open during the school day, which is meant for extra support, reteaching, pre-teaching, and it can even be used for second chance learning opportunities. We have our extended learning time Tuesdays from two-four, two forty-five to four fifteen. And Thursdays is online from seven PM to eight PM. Online will be used for Microsoft Teams and teachers will be tutoring those. The Tuesday sessions are in-person in the library, and they will be offered by NHS and Star's tutors as well as teachers. School-wide, non-academic-related events, our Wisslink Club welcomed the class of two thousand and twenty-eight. Our freshman orientation was a hit. Around four hundred ninth graders were welcomed by Wisslink teachers and students. This was an opportunity for them to learn and connect with upperclassmen. They received a school tour and high school tips. The Wisslink leaders also delivered lawn signs the weekend before school. Our affinity groups, HLA will be forming a mariachi band on October fifteenth. They're excited. We have had two meetings so far. And we'll be having the party in the square gym for Hispanic Heritage Month. Our activities fair for the ninth graders was also during this month, it's September thirteenth. They learned about and even signed up for clubs at the school. All clubs had representatives there so they could learn about schools. Uh, the Wissahicken Camarada Club, they had their annual nine-eleventh memorial concert led by Mr. Conaham. And school safety, uh, it is important to know that every student feels safe at this school. So we have our safe-to-save program. If a student, if a student sees something that is right, I'm wrong, they should report it. It is also good to know that this is an anonymous reporting site, so there is pure confidentiality. Students can also always talk to a trusted faculty, teacher, or staff member. For mental health resources, uh, your school counselor is always a great resource, and there's a school psychologist.
I'm gonna talk a little bit about the sports. All fall sports are currently underway. Of course, water polo, we just had the big Beast of the East tournament. On Friday, we held it here in Wes, and we got a lot of, um, like congratulatory and and involvement with, um, NHS for volunteering hours for the snack stand, big hit. We did lose a game on Friday, but it's okay. Uh, tennis team season's almost done, and, um, their senior, like banquet went very well. And this week is homecoming, so we're doing spirit wear. Tomorrow is, uh, tomorrow's spirit wear is like team, team like sports day, so like my entire team, we have a home game at against North Penn. We're all wearing our like little like spirit wears from the store, so, yeah.
Very cool. Thank you so much for that report. Anybody have any questions or comments? Yeah, Paul.
Are we having the bonfire this year?
I'm pretty sure we're not having the bonfire this year. I, it's not on the schedule for this week, and that's when we usually have it, so. Yeah. I don't think it, like, went very well last year. It's okay. I never been, so.
Any other comments or questions?
I'll just say, welcome Isabel to your first meeting. Good to see you.
Thank you very much.
All right, no other questions or comments? All right, well, thank you again. All right, we'll move on now to our first public comment period. And, um, I'm gonna read the instructions, because we do have some new instructions on here. The board appreciates hearing from the community. A maximum of five speakers will be heard on the same topic. Please limit your comments to three minutes. In the interest of fairness and in order to treat all speakers equally, it's the board's practice to not engage in dialogue with speakers, but appropriate follow-ups responses will be posted on board docs. Um, I don't think we have anyone in person, right, Amanda?
We have no one in person.
Anyone online?
There's no one online.
Okay, so we have no public speakers. Okay, then we will move on to the board president report. And before I get into my actual report, um, we did have an announcement earlier today. And sadly, Jim has shared some news with the community that he will be retiring um, as of June thirtieth. Uh, so I don't know if we clap for him. Congratulations, Jim. We'll have plenty of time.
I don't think you're clapping because he's retiring.
Yeah. Um, but I do have a couple of comments. Actually, it's a pretty long comment, but I do want to share some remarks. I want to start by thanking Jim for his service to our district. In a time of frequent leadership turnover in districts all over the region, state, and nation, Dr. Chris Field provided over ten years of leadership stability, second-longest period of service among all current Montgomery County superintendents. And I just want to take a few moments to do something I know that will make him completely uncomfortable, but talk about some of the amazing accomplishments he has had during that tenure. Uh, one thing I'm sure that we all have noticed, he has maintained Wissahicken's high ratings as a school district, while also maintaining the second lowest tax rate in all of Montgomery County. Uh, if you got your annual report, as I did this weekend, you hopefully will have taken note that we are still the second lowest in Montgomery County today. As you'll probably have noticed, many of our board goals, um, which we'll be discussing shortly, also focus on student well-being. And he's consistently sought the right balance between academic excellence and student well-being, implementing many sustained, long-term initiatives intended to focus on both of these critical codependent missions of our school district. Ensure the district continued to maintain and preserve its assets, and ensure the district's facilities kept pace with enrollment growth, successfully completing major multimillion-dollar construction projects, including the turf fields at our high school, the auditorium conversion at the middle school, and additions at both Stony Creek and Blue Bell. And we can't forget COVID and how it changed the way in which we delivered education to our students. But he successfully led the district through a global pandemic, navigating many uncharted waters in both the medical and education fields. In order to maximize the learning opportunities for all students, he's emphasized the need for this district's leadership team and professional staff to mirror our student body in terms of demographics. And he has set in motion an intentional drive to recruit and hire exceptional top-shelf educators to help meet this key goal. Even setting up a program enabling a student to attend Gwynn and Mercy and then come back and teach here at Wissahicken. At all times, in all matters related to professional development, personal growth, and district advancement, Dr. Chris Field consistently applied the motto, "We can all get better at what we already do," and has injected that philosophy into every aspect of the district's operation over the past ten years. And it's been such an honor to sit here beside him for these past three years as board president. Now, as a board, we need to move forward, and fortunately, this board has given much thought to succession planning. Succession planning is seen as invaluable in both education and business. Over seventy-five percent of Fortune five-hundred companies promote CEOs from within the organization. And internal candidates fill anywhere from fifty to seventy percent of senior leadership roles in educational institutions. This reflects the organization's desire for familiarity with the institutional culture, a proven track record, and a reduced learning curve. Fortunately, we had the ideal internal candidate here in front of us for the past four years. Dr. Dewan. When Dr. Chris Field advised us of his intention to retire, we took the opportunity to meet with Jeff to discuss our legal options and our policies. We all took the time to meet with Dr. Dewan, and we all felt that her goals and her values aligned with those of this board and of our district. And we realized as a board that we had the unique opportunity to promote an extremely qualified and sought-after educator and leader. And now, Dr. Dewan, it's your turn to be embarrassed. Dr. Dewan is a leader in educational excellence. Over the last four years, she has helped lead a district-wide initiative to foster data-driven decision-making in an effort to improve student outcomes through effective, multi-tiered system of support frameworks. She works with our Director of Teaching Learning, Teaching and Learning, and other district other district leaders to implement a comprehensive professional development program for our faculty and staff, keeping them current with best educational practices, which includes our high-quality induction and mentoring program for new faculty. She plays a pivotal role in our district's hiring process, ensuring every step of the process is aligned with our shared goal of hiring only the most excellent educators. Her dedication to recruiting, hiring, and retaining the very best educators and leaders is evident in her relentless drive towards excellence. She's been instrumental in promoting equity within the district and collaborates closely with the Director of Equity and Cultural responsiveness to foster an inclusive educational environment. Dr. Dewan has played a significant role in the district's budget process, working collaboratively, collaboratively with the business administrator to ensure financial resources are allocated efficiently and effectively. Even before joining Wissahicken, Dr. Dewan served as an elementary principal and diversity, equity, and inclusion leader in the Phoenixville area school district. She has worked as a supervisor of student supports, supervisor of curriculum, an instructional support specialist, classroom teacher, and adjunct professor. And when we met over the summer, I was impressed to learn she was taking part in a recent graduate, and, and now is a recent graduate, of the AASA Firing Superintendence Academy for Female Leaders. This prestigious program is designed to prepare the next generation of superintendents by providing them with the skills and knowledge necessary to lead effectively. Dr. Dewan's involvement in this program underscores her commitment to professional growth and leadership development. Her dedication to educational excellence and her innovative approaches has significantly contributed to the ongoing success and growth of the Wissahicken School District. After all of us meeting with her, we all, I think, are in agreement that her vision is in line with this board and this district. And I'm confident that she will share in the many accomplishments that Dr. Chris Field has had over his tenure and will have many of her own. But while we all are obviously sad to say bye to Dr. Chris Field, I know that we are also excited and eager to welcome Dr. Dewan to her new role as superintendent. Uh, while the board is taking no action this evening, we will be asking Jeff to prepare a contract for our review, um, at our later October meeting. And this timing also allows us ample time to conduct a search for our assistant superintendent to replace Dr. Dewan, and will allow Dr. Dewan time to work with Dr. Chris Field to transition to her new role. Um, as far as timing, um, I would note that October seventh, our next meeting, the board will have to approve your resignation. We'll, we'll see if we do that.
You're imploded.
And, um, October twenty-eighth, we'll review the contract, and then November fourth, we'll, we'll vote on that contract. Um, so that's the timing, and, yeah. Any other questions or comments from the board? No?
Just a comment thanking, uh, Dr. Chris Field and, uh, obviously welcoming Dr. Dewan.
Yeah, I, I second that, uh, Dr. Chris Field. It's been a pleasure to work with you. Um, and thank you for all you've done for the district. You really have been a steady leader, and as I've gotten to know you, I, I think that you're an excellent person, too, and I just, that's really important to me. And that is one of the reasons why I support Dr. Dewan for superintendent. She is not only an exceptional leader, but she's a role model in every sense of the word. Um, so I'm just really proud that Wissahicken can have someone like you.
I'd like to just echo all of those comments. I think, you know, as a district, we've become somewhat spoiled and complacent at the leadership that we've had, and particularly within, uh, the administration with Dr. Chris Field, as well as with Dr. Dewan. So, um, it's important that we don't take these things for granted. It's important that we look at our peer districts, as great as some of them are. They all hail in comparison to, to what we have here at Wissahicken. And that transcends down throughout our other administrative staff, our teachers, our faculty, um, and ultimately to our students. And, uh, we see that every day, um, although we don't always recognize it, but, um, I think what is evident from the appreciation most of us have seen in our, our houses, in our properties within the district, and the fact that within days of going on the market, the majority of them, uh, sell. And that's because people are extremely eager to come into this district, particularly with, with children, so that they can enjoy the, the things that we've become accustomed to in our district. So I just want to thank Dr. Chris Field for his tremendous service and leadership, and, uh, and welcome Dr. Dewan, and we're excited for the future, and, uh, and wish Dr. Chris Field where it will.
Jim, I just wanted to make the comment that, um, it's hard to believe it's almost been a full decade, um, with you at the helm as superintendent, um, which just reminded me that it's almost been a full decade that I've been on the school board, because I started as a school board member shortly on the heels of you coming to, to Wissahicken. And, um, this past decade, I, I really appreciate your leadership and your steady hand that you've brought to the district. Um, what folks may not realize is that we've gone through a huge amount of change in the past ten years as a district. Um, not even just speaking about the pandemic, which was, you know, crazy for everyone. But when I look back on when I started the district, um, to now, we have grown as a district tremendously. I think almost a thousand more students now than when I first joined, um, as a board member. So tremendous growth in students. We've, um, expanded, uh, Stony Creek, Blue Bell, and made a capital improvements through a whole bunch of our buildings to accommodate increased enrollment. Um, during the ten, the past ten years, our district has not only grown in size, but also has become more diverse, um, with nearly, I think, in the neighborhood of forty percent of our students, non-white. Uh, we've had, um, an increasingly larger share of special ed students. Um, we have an increasing percentage of low-income students. So our overall student population is, um, becoming more diverse and more varied, um, as well as much larger. But through it all, uh, with you at the helm, our district has continued to provide a high quality and a top-notch education for all of our students. Um, and I look forward to continuing that trajectory and that trend with Dr. Dewan taking the reins, um, at the end of the school year. I also, um, as a side note, um, I know Dr. Dewan not only as, you know, assistant superintendent, but we were actually colleagues at the Phoenixville area school district. I guess it was twelve-plus years ago, and knowing her as a peer and as a colleague, um, I always found her as a fantastic, passionate, gifted, um, educator, um, really warm and caring, and really dedicated to students. And I was so excited when she came to join the team here in Wissahicken. And again, I'm super excited that she'll be, uh, taking the reins from Jim, uh, in about a year. It's, it's not exactly goodbye for Jim yet, because we still have many months with him, which I think is fantastic. Uh, but it'll help ease the way for Dr. Dewan to take, to take over. And, uh, we have many more months to, uh, enjoy Jim's leadership, uh, before he goes off into the sunset. But again, Jim, thanks for all your contributions and, uh, all, uh, all that you've done for the district, uh, over the past decade.
Just wanted to say congratulations to Dr. Chris Field, and, uh, thank you to the board. I'm honored to be considered for this opportunity. Thank you.
I would just say thank you all for those very nice words, and I'll have more to say between now and June thirtieth. And I'll also have more to say about, uh, the decision about Dr. Dewan, because, um, you could not have possibly made a better decision. And however, meanwhile, there's work to be done, so we're gonna get to work starting right now.
Any other comments before I move on? Nope, okay. And moving to seven point one, these are our board goals, and let me scroll down. All right, so this evening, we're doing our final review of these goals. And did everybody have a chance to review these? We'll go through them. Uh, goal number one, fill key staffing vacancies in district leadership positions, and then craft and carry out a deliberately designed transition plan for newly placed leaders intended to support these key employees in fulfilling their leadership responsibilities as soon as they assume their new leadership position in Wissahicken, in the Wissahick in Wissahicken, year two of two. Is that where the supposed to be there? Yeah. Any comments on that particular goal? No, okay. Number two, support the implementation of positive behavioral interventions and supports, PBIS, district-wide, as part of an effective, multi-tiered system of supports, uh, framework, year two of, of two, your goal. Any comments on that one? Okay, number three, increase opportunities for board members to interact with community members and groups of various events, and increase communication with community members and groups through multimedia snippets of various school board members, highlighting board news, upcoming board events, et cetera. And let me see. Any comments on this one?
Sure. So, yeah, for, for me, it's not that I don't value interacting with the community, I do, but I also think that it's important to know that people do have access to us, whether it be email or coming to a meeting or me seeing them at community events. I can't fix certain issues, like small issues in a building, and I feel like when we put ourselves out there so much, it seems like they should come to us with anything and everything, and that's not always the case. But besides that, I just think there's a bigger goal that we should be looking at, and that would be making sure that our enrollment projections, our meeting, or our building accommodations can meet our enrollment projections. Meaning, there's a band of students coming up that is, it's quite large, a couple of large classes, and I want to be certain that we have the capacity in the middle school and high school to be able to, you know, accommodate, yep, and meet the standards that we're used to for these students as well. You know, just because they're a larger class, they shouldn't be, um, they shouldn't have less opportunity or have these insanely large class sizes or whatever, whatever, you know, sometimes happens with large classes. So that, to me, is just really important, and while I understand the intent of number three with interaction, and that's great, I just think that you, you know, using a board goal to make sure that the community knows that we have our pulse on this as a priority is, is more important. That's my opinion.
And I would tend to agree with Diane, that I think that that's a more important goal, and I think, like, honestly, looking at goal three, as it's written in the actual goal section, like, this is something like we can do on our own. Anyway, we don't need to set it for the administration to accomplish. Um, like, I don't think Jim needs to remind me maybe to come half an hour early to have coffee with some members of the community or to, you know, perhaps send something to Kristen, to like maybe post on social media. That's something that maybe we could just do on our own. Um, as board members, we don't necessarily set it as a goal for the administration to accomplish for us. So maybe that, yeah, I mean, taking the note at the bottom and replacing that as a goal for the administration to accomplish. And we as, you know, board members can maybe just agree, like, hey, let's have something next week and just have, you know, Kristen send something out on social media saying, hey, can the community come thirty minutes prior to our meeting to meet with us for coffee or something? Okay, so can we replace, is there, is everybody in agreement with that?
So I'm, I'm, I'm fine to, to replace number three. I would like the communications committee to think specifically about certain outreach, uh, possibilities and, and around, actually around specific topics. So we get outreach emails, et cetera, around things like cell phone policy, um, and a lot of the things that are happening in other states, et cetera. Uh, obviously, with recent thing, and thank you for your comment on everyone feeling safe at school, at school safety. I mean, if we could organize some specific listening sessions with the community, I think that would be great. And I'm sorry, I'm looking at the communications committee member next to me.
Oh, yeah, but I don't mean for it to, like, replace something like that. Like, I thought this was more like for us to have, like, coffee with us or for us to have, like, posts about us on social media or something. No, I feel like that's still something like within, like, committees, right? Because, like, Paul, like, Reoc has, like, its sessions throughout the year. Like, couldn't we have, like, individual, like, the committees have sessions, like, on different topics, like, have those organized? Is that thing, like, exactly, what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, and so Steve and, and you are kind of like jumping ahead, because next week is one of our communication, um, meetings, and that is actually on the docket to be discussed. So I do think that makes sense to keep some of this, like, sitting on the communications committee agenda and not so much as a district goal. I, I'm aligned to what, you know, Diane was suggesting is perhaps we kind of put that aside, not because we're putting it aside, but we're putting it under the communications agenda and putting something that's a little bit more, I know, of a administrative response, responsibility or goal for, for us to help achieve for the community. So I'm aligned with that. Steve, we're certainly already thinking about some of these things. There's a couple of things in play. Uh, Dr. Dewan had some ideas as well, and next week is kind of our kickoff to kind of talk through some of these things that we've been kicking around so that we could see what we could do for this year, but I totally agree. I totally agree. Yeah. Yeah, makes sense for everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
And I, I think the work that the communications committee is doing is great, so thank you for keeping that up, but I, I would, yeah, I do appreciate if people, uh, agree um, with just making sure we have our pulse on, on our enrollment projections. That's important.
Amy, just one more comment regarding the switching goal number three, which I'm fully in support of. Um, it actually, uh, builds off of some comments we've heard earlier tonight. Isabel talked about, um, the incoming class, uh, the high school being around four hundred students. Our graduating class this past year was three hundred thirty-eight students. So the growth that the district has seen over the past, like, eight, ten years, started about eight, nine years ago with our kindergarten cohorts jumping from about three hundred forty students to four hundred, and a little bit of, in that range for the next several years. That's where a lot of the growth in the district overall has been driven. It's at the earlier, earlier grades, and in particular with much larger kindergarten cohorts.
Fast forward eight, nine years, that cohort is starting to hit the high school, right? But there's big cohorts of four hundred-plus kids right behind them. So I think it's timely that we take a, you know, a broader look and a longer-term look at what those larger cohort sizes are going to mean at the middle school and the high school in particular, as those are kind of big bubble grades start making their way up through our our system. We've addressed a lot of the capacity issues at the elementary level, but I think taking a closer look at a more strategic and long-term look at our secondary grades makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, I agree. And looking at the the classroom sizes, we got those numbers. Like, some of them, like, the classes, we can already see that there's large numbers coming up as we look at, like, what are the ten-day numbers?
Yeah, we we do have the the annual opportunity to have our demographer update the projections. And they get that much more reliable, more reliable once the actual kindergarten numbers are in, which they are. And then that's something that the Facilities Committee always looks at. But now, with we replace it with this goal, it will be looked at through the lens of how are those secondary buildings, namely, middle school and high school, set up for classroom space, given the bubble that's coming through? And I think Joe alluded to this, but the, and we're going to, this will be part of the enrollment update here in a second. But this this year's kindergarten class is actually back down again. So we have, we we have, we'll factor that in to the equation. As you know, of course, the kindergarten class works its way through the the grades, and that impacts the midterm and long-term facility needs. So in in a sense, that's good news for facilities. But we do see this ebb and flow, and indeed, there is a bubble coming through. So that's very, very doable goal.
Okay, great. Is everybody in agreement of switching up that goal? Anyone object to it? All right, so let's switch that one out. Keeping in mind that we still want to do some communications, like having those sessions, because we don't want to rule that out. Okay. All right, then going to number four, in partnership with the WEA Craft Fair and Reasonable Successor, WEA Collective Bargaining Agreement, to go in effect once the current agreement expires in June of twenty twenty-five. Any questions or comments with regard to that? Okay, number five, cultivate a safe and inclusive school environment through the implementation of practices that promote belongingness, conflict resolution, pro-social behaviors, including the continued approved implementation of ADL's No Place For Hate Program. Any comments or questions with regard to that?
No, no edits. I I do feel that, you know, the term belonging could have some different definitions in people's minds. So I don't know if we need to have kind of a lexicon of what we mean by belonging because sometimes I feel like when folks hear the word belonging, they think of it in a very kind of small lens, whereas I think of it as a very holistic kind of, you know, viewpoint where everybody in our community feels like they belong in this community regardless. So I I I don't know, this might be something we need to think a little bit more, and maybe we can pull it into the communications agenda. But, you know, to me, belonging is not just an SEI thing. It's it's like, are we all, like, sitting here in a community together, working together? That that's how I see it. So perhaps we need some some lexicon definitions. So maybe something we could add on to that, or I don't know how others feel, but I do feel like some words can kind of have different interpretations based on different people's viewpoint. And we should then have a vocabulary for what we mean by some of this, by some of these words. Just just a thought.
Thank you. Other thoughts on that? Yeah. All right. Um, all right. So then we'll finalize these. Okay, great. All right. So that finishes up our goal.
So just to be clear, we will rewrite goal number three. And then will we vote on it? Can we, can you circulate that a little bit in advance so that, you know, we all feel good about that before we're voting on it? And then we're not trying to wordsmith it potentially?
That's a good idea.
Thank you.
All right. So in front of our next seven point two, ratification to appoint Eugene Golson, Zepi Carey Anrakis, and Diane Morris as twenty twenty-four PSBA delegates to the Wissahicken School Board. So you guys, this was for the conference in August, correct?
No, it's actually, it's a virtual conference that'll take place November second. And
Oh, we're going to name you in August, right? We're going to name you.
Yes, exactly.
The deadline.
Yes, you named us in August, you're ratifying it, I guess, next week. And it's just that we get to go, we get three delegates for our district size, and we get to participate in the discussion of how PSBA is going to shape their platform, which I think is important. So.
Yeah. All right. All right, great. Any comments or questions about that? All right. Then my report is done. Thank you. Assistant Report.
Okay, thank you. We have one item that is actually has two parts tonight, and it's the annual enrollment update, which, as you recall, is dictated by the state to be the official tenth day of school. I mean, is there a way, can you zoom that in or can I do that here? Just a little bit anyway. Yeah. So the the this first sheet compares last year's tenth day to this year's. Yes, that's good there. Thank you. And then as as we scroll down, we see that the totals, a tiny bit more. Totals for the elementary were actually are down compared to last year, and that reflects that relatively small kindergarten class of three hundred fifty. And then we also see the the bubble we've been talking about in the previous goals discussion of grades, well, now grade five. Last year's grade four is is appreciably higher than three fifty. So this is very typical for a district. It it enrollments will ebb and flow. Hopefully, for the district, they are on a ascending trend. You do not want to be part of a district that's shrinking and have to make decisions about closing schools and and consolidating. So you also don't want to be part of a district that doesn't pay attention to long-term planning. So I, that's why that's a good idea in our previous discussion to have that goal of mapping up our existing facilities capacities with these enrollment projections, which will be updated probably in the December timeframe. District-wide is the bottom half of this, where you see the middle schools gone up a little bit. No, go down. There you go. Right there. As compared to last year, the middle schools' total enrollment went up a little bit, and as did the high schools. So overall, net is an increase of a grand total of thirty students, which actually is fewer than what we had projected at the time of the budget creation, which is a good problem to have. But budget-wise, again, it's that's almost entirely driven by that relatively small kindergarten class. And then we keep track of this monthly and report the data monthly to the state. But this tenth day data is what the state actually uses for a lot of calculations, a lot of funding comparisons and things. So before we go down to the to the next part, is there any questions on this year's snapshot of tenth day versus last year's tenth day? Pretty straightforward. Okay. So then we go down to the second half of this, which is actually a look at a five-year lookback. It's the same point in time, the tenth day each year, just five years running. We actually have some data from the previous years as well. And this gets to the point where, which Joe was speaking of earlier, which is over the last five years, you can see we've had a growth total across the district of three hundred forty-six students, which is a seven, a little over seven percent growth over five years. I think it's still important to note, there's a footnote there, barely readable, but the COVID years still are throwing a little bit of a wrench into these trends. So I wouldn't put a a whole lot of import on on necessarily years that include the COVID years. But you can see, for example, that top line Blue Bell increased as it's Stoney Creek. And it's no coincidence that that's, those are the two schools we chose to add on to. And we accomplished that at Stoney, and we're in the process of accomplishing that at Blue Bell. So a- and that's the value of these enrollment projections because you make long-term decisions and how to spend very scarce capital dollars based on what you project your needs to be. And I think these numbers bear out our decisions in that regard. Any questions or thoughts on this document? We'll talk down. Thank you. That concludes my report.
I said you have one question. I mean, when we're looking at enrollment numbers as part of that analysis, can we also look at, like, class size? But you see, like, there's some classes, you know, we're looking at nineteen, and then some classes we have, like, twenty-seven.
Yeah, so our 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 class size guidelines, and we're speaking almost exclusively at the K to five level now,
Yeah.
exist, and they were at the top of that sheet where, as everybody remembers, the guideline of twenty-two in grades K and one, and then a guideline of twenty-six in grades two and three, and a guideline of twenty-seven in grades four and five. And the more students you have, the the more able you are to become efficient and get closer to those guidelines. So by way of example, in in Blue Bell's kindergarten, we only have, it's a tenth day, sixty-two students. One or two either way can move those numbers way more appreciably than a few students in, say, Shady Grove's grade one, where there's a hundred thirty-six students. So for example, that's double. Shady Grove's first grade has more than double the kindergarten at Blue Bell. It's way easier to get efficient in grade, it's Shady Grove grade one than it is in when you're using a smaller number. Having said that, there are places on here where the resulting class sizes as of the tenth day are either well within guidelines or close to them one way or the other. There are a couple of spots here where we actually could have gotten away with if we rolled precisely by the guidelines of having one fewer class kindergarten, first grade, a couple of places. And then there's a couple where we are at or just slightly above the guidelines. That's because decisions about class size and the number of sections are made around August first, give or take. And that does not mean that we cut off the flow of enrollment registrations, either adding or subtracting on August first. Things change. And so we have to make staffing decisions, we have to make decisions about class size at some point. And between that point, which is again, say, August first, and the tenth day, which in this case, this year was September ten, things change. And that's why this this document can't be as precise and as perfectly efficient as it would be if we were just dealing with widgets and numbers. It was super simple to reshuffle kids in different classes and hire top-shelf teacher right off the rack with twenty-four hours' notice. None of that really happens. So that's why we have to give ourselves time, which is the reason why there's some spots that are too low and some spots that are too high.
Okay.
So can can I ask a follow-up?
Sure.
I understand this might be the way that we must report our data to the state, but it's actually really hard for me, kind of, school board member to kind of digest this information. Would it be possible, like, as we move forward, that we kind of think about using line graphs where we could kind of see trend lines a little bit better? Because it's really, really hard to interpret this data. Like, and then there's, like, data pieces that's not here. For example, we only have, like, some pieces, like, on the bottom, on your page one, on the bottom right, your Virtual Academies, your Full-Time North Monco. And I understand these are really small numbers, but, like, I thought it was very peculiar that we went from thirteen to three. Is that normal? Is that, like, a new blip? Or, like, but there's no historical to kind of, like, look back on that. So would it be possible, like, moving forward, that we kind of start looking at this with trend lines just so that we can also understand that? And I know for the secondary schools, our building kind of, how many people we can house in our buildings is very different than in elementary school. But it still would help us if we had, like, in the legend, like, you know, occupancy max X, occupancy max Y or whatever. Just again, like, if we're kind of, like, thinking ahead, like, how far away are we from a kind of a red, a red flag? You know, are we, like, just a little bit or are we, like, really, really far away? It's really hard in this fashion to really digest that information.
No question. The answer is yes, absolutely. On that five, on the the five-year tracker, we'll add the lines to keep, to demonstrate, say, charter school and North Monaco and things like that over time.
Yeah.
And we can trend line those for sure. This, this, the one document that compares one year to the next wouldn't really work.
Yeah.
But I can tell you also that the enrollment projections that our demographer gives us has, is almost, is actually only in trend lines, which is very helpful to see.
Yeah.
And on that document, I'll superimpose that building's capacity so that when we have that, and that's probably, that's typically a Facilities Committee conversation, it'll be more visually, shall we say, appealing.
Thank you. Also, do we have any information or data on, like, average class sizes in the middle school and high school? And the high school might be different because there's those outliers with low enrollment classes. Maybe throwing out those, like, what would be the average? I'm just curious to know with the enrollment increases, what that means for class sizes.
We can get that, yes.
Thank you.
And maybe we just do it for core classes, just because we know, like, language and some other things might might be the outliers. But I agree with Diane, like, math, English, social stuff. Like, I'm sure we call things very different now, but thanks.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you for the report. Oh, actually, you know, Jim, I did have one other question I wrote down. The numbers for the Stoney Creek and Shady Grove, do those numbers for the classrooms include if there was an autistic support student? And I guess also the emotional support, is that that's a little blue bell or is that another school right now?
That's a blue bell, and the answer is yes. The numbers on that chart include all of our students. And so those are essentially homeroom numbers.
Right.
And in some cases, like you mentioned, if there's a, if there's a program such as Autistic Support, which we call now PACE, it it is the case that maybe one or two or even more students in that classroom depart for a good portion of the day or instruction in a different place. So whereas the homeroom numbers show one thing, the actual numbers for during math, say, as an example, might be a couple fewer. It's not too too big, but it is a a fact, yes.
Thank you. All right. All right. Assistant Superintendent Report.
Thank you. No information items or action items this evening.
Thank you. Board Solicitor Report, Jeff.
Board action will be required to approve item ten point one, which is a settlement bond between family H and student H twenty-four in the Wissahicken School District in the not-to-exceed amount set forth in the document.
Thank you, Jeff. Any comments or questions? All right. Thank you. Board Secretary Report, Tim.
Board action will be required for the regular board meeting minutes of August nineteenth and the Curriculum and Technology Committee meetings from September twenty-third.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Thank you. Board Treasurer Report.
Attached also for this month will be the August twenty twenty-four Treasurers Report.
Great. Thank you. Any comments or questions? All right. Thanks again. Human Resources.
Good evening. For your view tonight are seven items under Section thirteen of the Human Resources Report. The first action item includes appointments, resignations, retirements, The first action item, uh, includes appointments, resignations, retirements, changes of status, leaves of absences, and extracurricular changes. Item two represents salary changes for educational attainment and item three lists volunteer additions. Item four is for the approval of the elementary after-school program. Thirteen point five is for the continued use of job coaches to support some students in the WVA, our Wissaken Virtual Academy. Number six is the list of inductee mentors for the school year. And lastly, item seven is for the approval of the, of an amendment to the STS, which is our Substitute Teacher Services Agreement, um, making a slight adjustment to the assistant sub-rate. That concludes my report.
Great. Thank you. Any comments or questions?
Sorry, Danielle, can you just refresh my memory? What does TPE mean under the classification?
Uh, Temporary Professional Employee.
Uh, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Right, Singham, thank you again. Uh, Communications Committee, Zephie.
There are no, uh, items for this week, but, um, there is a reminder that we will have a communications committee meeting next Monday, right before our regular board meeting. Hopefully you all can come.
Thank you, Zephie. Uh, Curriculum and Technology, Dan.
Yes, um, we had a meeting last Monday evening and several, uh, topics were discussed. I'll review them briefly. We had Dr. Biaka come in and talk about the elementary schedule, which if you recall several, two years ago, we added a second recess and they changed some instruction time. Um, he discussed some of the, um, slight tweaks they have made to the schedule in order to just, uh, better serve the teachers and students. Um, so that was good. We got an update from the middle school administration uh, on their schedule as well and some of the challenges of their schedule change and how they have updated and made changes to improve, um, upon that. We had an update from the high school with the low enrollment courses and that was, um, that's a list that comes to the board recommended by Dr. Blair and the administration team at the high school to keep, even though the enrollment may be slightly lower than, than normal classes. Uh, we have the comprehensive plan for the next three years. That's required every three years by the Pennsylvania Department of Education. And our comprehensive plan, uh, will focus on multi-tiered systems of support. Um, and that will be presented. Uh, I guess we're just in a draft mode right now to be presented. Uh, we also talked about subjects that are going to be in the curriculum review process for, for next year. That's going to be the math, um, applied arts, which is going to be the family and consumer science and business education, along with health, PE, fine arts and library. And I believe that is what we covered. Oh, oh, and the federal programs and the grant, uh, and the grant programs that we, um, have spent our money on. Sorry, I missed that one. But I think that's it, right? Okay. So now I will turn it over to Dr. Juwan, if you would be so kind as to run through the items to vote on.
Yes, thank you. We have seven items that we are reviewing this evening with the board. We'll seek approval, um, at the October seventh board meeting. The first is, um, approval for the final payment for the MCIU, uh, for our shared services plan for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. The second item is, um, approval of a payment to the Bucks County Intermediate Unit for our final, uh, reconciliation billing for the shared services program there for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. The third is, um, approval of outplace services for two students who are, whose information is included in the chart. The fourth is, um, we'll be seeking for approval of our, um, license with EduCer, um, which is an online platform that we are able to use in our special education program for students who are in our emotional support program, specifically at the secondary level. Um, the board approved this, uh, action last year and the team found success with it. Um, and so we're looking to have a budget that will cover approximately five seat licenses. Um, and that will only be charged in the event that we actually use those seats. The next item is, uh, request for board approval of our annual subscription for Leader Services, which is what we use for IEP Writer in our Special Education Department, um, with the, the licenses through IEP Writer. The next item is approval of the, um, Elementary Reading and Math After-School Program. Um, details are listed here for the board. It is aligned with the program from last year and the cost is aligned as well. And the final item is, um, for approval to accept and expend the federal and state grant funds that are outlined in the chart, which were reviewed at the BCTC meeting. Uh, so we'll be seeking approval of these items next, next week. Thank you. That concludes our report.
Great. Thank you. Any comments or questions? All right, Singham, we'll move on to the Finance Committee Report. Oh, did I miss one?
Facilities.
Oh, facilities. Oh, my goodness. Sorry. I scrolled down too far.
No problem.
Sorry.
Um, we have no informational items this evening, but we do have three action items for consideration and for vote next week. Uh, the first one is an approval to discard or sell obsolete equipment according to Board Policy seven fourteen. Sixteen point two is, uh, approving the sale of a portion of our Blue Bell property to the Whitpain Township. Uh, this is so that the township can install a traffic light. Um, that's for fifty-three thousand dollars. And then the third item, sixteen point three, is a change order for, uh, the high school and middle school masonry repointing project, uh, for some additional work that needs to be done. I'm sure Tim has, uh, more details. If anyone has any questions, uh, about sixteen point one, two or three.
I have a question on sixteen point one. Joe, where did they get, where does the obsolete equipment get sold?
Yeah.
So they pushed it, posted on the website and we sell as much as we can. Some of it is donated, like books can be donated to other schools. But traditionally we just put it on the website and try and sell to different vendors.
Okay, thanks.
Tim, I did have a question regarding sixteen point two. Um, the dollar amount of fifty-three thousand dollars, how was that determined?
To be honest, Whitpain Township decided that that would be the fair amount. They could always eminent their main. It is just a sliver of the, um, side of the road of Schoolhouse that we're on that we do not utilize. So it's really unused grassy area for us.
Okay.
Do we know the timing of that, uh, traffic light install?
They said it might take about a year.
That's at School Lane in seventy-three?
Yes.
Got it.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Tim, I'm just surprised that we still have, um, CD players, cassette players and VHS players. That they haven't been previously sold. We still have these?
Yes.
Wow. Okay. They might be worth money, like collectible items.
I don't know what you're putting on.
Fashion projects. Okay. Wow. Okay. All right. There were no other questions, right?
Yep. Yep, that's our word. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Uh, now finance.
Yeah, and informational item, uh, cassettes are coming back.
What?
Uh, true. Um, so we'll be looking for approval of three items, uh, next week. One is the financial reports for the end of August. Uh, second is the list of payments for the same time period, and then third is approval to waive the stadium fees for the go, do better for Steve five K in October.
Great. Any comments or questions? All right, Singham, thank you. Uh, Policy Committee, Marshall.
Thank you, Amy. I have no informational or action items.
Okay. Uh, Rachel Equity Oversight, Paul.
We have no, uh, no items for this evening.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Rosetta, Health, Wellness and Safety.
Thanks, Amy. No action items and we have our next meeting October twenty-first.
All right. Thanks, Rosetta. Um, now Report of Board Representatives, uh, Marshall, Extracurricular.
Well, I have nothing to report this evening.
All right. Um, MCIU, um, we have our legislative meeting later this week, but I will note, um, anybody, if you, has anyone driven up Morris and seen the new Discovery Center that the MCIU built? Like heading, like if you had Morris heading towards Lansdale? No, nobody's seen this?
No.
All right. Tim's seen it. Okay.
I drive by, yes.
All right. Well, now you'll all see it and you won't miss it now when you're driving at Morris. But it's finally opened at the end of August, um, our new Discovery Center and um, the programming there is going to include Head Start, pre-k counts, early intervention. Um, so take a look for it when you're driving at Morris. Now just, just drive up anyway, just to see it. It's on your right-hand side and you'll see the new building um, that just opened for the MCIU. Um, but anyways, I just wanted to share that. That's, that's my report and I'll have legislative news, uh, next time. All right, um, North Monaco.
Uh, no report.
We keep missing that meeting because you keep scheduling it on save days.
Try not to do that next time. Uh, when's your next one, by the way?
Next one is in two weeks.
Oh, darn.
It's three weeks.
Three plans, something. Uh, PFA liaison?
Uh, I'll update next week.
Okay. Um, ERC.
Nothing to report.
Okay. All right. Well, that brings us to our second public comment period. And again, I'm going to read these instructions because they are new. Uh, the board appreciates hearings from the community. A maximum of five speakers to be heard on the same topic. Please limit your comments to three minutes. In the interest of fairness and in order to treat all speakers equally, it's the board's practice to not engage in dialogue with speakers. When appropriate, follow-up responses will be posted on board docs. Um, if you want to hand that in. We have one person in person. Um, but actually you're our only one in person, so you can just come on up. Yeah, just state your name and municipality of residence. And I will warn you, we now have a buzzer so that I don't have to watch the clock. I can just listen.
My name's Sheena McNamee. I'm a parent, um, of a student in elementary school. I was here regarding the security incident on September twelfth. I just wanted to use this opportunity to address the, with the board. Um, just, you know, the, how it played out for a parent, um, you know, as that incident and investigation was unfolding and the severity and scope and, and even the participants were unknown. Um, you know, I understand, you know, that social media and rumors and, you know, rampant and, and politics, especially like gun rights politics, uh, you know, um, impacts how people respond. But until that noise and excitement subsides, I wish more had been done to secure the entire campus. Um, I, I walked up, I live a few blocks away and actually the helicopters were so loud, so loud, I couldn't, I had to cancel a client meeting. Um, so I just walked up because I was like, maybe this is more serious than I realized and there was no police presence o- outside of my son's, outside of LGE or the middle school, at least not visibly. The middle school students were out at gym on the track. And at this point, you know, we were hearing texts from inside that there was a gun, but they didn't know who it was and there might be multiple people. It wasn't clear. Um, and I understand not giving out a lot of information, but you didn't know if, if somebody was going to be running. Um, so anyway, the middle school students were at gym. The elementary school students were at recess with, again, no police. Um, so I was just going to, sorry, my notes are on my phone. Um, you know, a few simple steps that can be taken, um, to, to make it more secure, you know, at least for that school day, um, you know, not, maybe not alert the children unnecessarily, but ways we could put, you know, think of all three schools as one campus, um, because on the day of, you know, the staff will need to quickly react to the, um, and uh, it would just be helpful until everything was known and, and everyone was home safely. Um, so then, you know, a few simple requests would be, you know, like a modified lockdown, like students aren't playing outside that day. They have recess inside, right? Gym class inside. Um, you know, all it, officers outside at the other two buildings, which, you know, I think they often are anyway, but, you know, making sure the doors were locked. Just some of the things we've learned from other incidents. I think that's really it. I just wanted to express that. And, and sorry, one last thing I was just going to say is, you know, in my son's class, I think he says four to five kids were picked up early and including one friend whose grandma worked at the high school. And so she worked in the high school and was inside as a secretary and she contacted her son and said, get our son out of, out like Lower Gwinnett. So I felt like, you know, she had more information than I did as a parent, you know, but, but that would be, um, again, just if we could focus on the security. Thanks.
Thanks, Sheena. Amanda, is there anyone registered online?
We have no one online.
No one online? Okay. Right. And we have no one else registered in person, so we'll close public comment. Um, and now we'll open it up to board comments. Do any of my fellow board members have any comments this evening? I did have, um, one thing I was going to share. Hold on, let me find it here. Um, let me see where I have it. Oh, it's in my email. So, um, when I was at the football game, um, two weeks ago, um, Jim and I spoke to some students that are with the mini-thon and they're hosting a really unique, um, fundraiser, um, Kids Night Out. And so spread the word to like elementary age families. On October nineteenth, from five to nine PM, parents can bring their children to, um, the school. So if you see, they're going to be having it I think here at the high school. Actually, I don't see on the flyer where exactly at the high school. Is it going to be, do you know, Jim? Dr. Juwan, do you know? Or, oh, you guys do know?
I believe it's at the high school. I'm not in mini-thon personally, but I believe I've seen it, that it's being done at the high school.
That's where they told me it was, but I don't see it on their flyer, but, um, I think if you contact them, they could probably tell you more. October nineteenth, five to nine, you can drop your kids off for arts, crafts, face painting and, uh, put them in costume. Um, it looks like there'll be prizes, sports activities. Um, but parents can have a night out and you can leave your kids there for thirty dollars, it looks like. And, uh, for ages K through five. So it just sounded like a really unique fundraiser and parents can enjoy an evening out. So, um, I told them I would spread the word. Um, any other comments?
I had not heard about that, but that's a really cool concept.
Yeah, they said they heard about it from another school.
And can I just add to that? The, they're, they're raising money for childhood cancer. So that's where the, the funds are being, being raised.
Yeah, no, it's such a great cause. Yeah, yeah. And they said they got it from another school district. They heard the idea. So it just sounds like a really fun, unique fundraiser.
I'd love it. Yeah. I, uh, I kind of miss like, you know, pre-COVID. Um, Helping Hands used to do this event every fall and every spring where we would all come in and do like service projects. And like, it hasn't come back since COVID. And I was like really thinking about how we need more kind of activities happening kind of inside these buildings to bring us closer together. So this is kind of like along those lines. I, I like that idea. So I'm glad to hear it and it's for a good cause, like you said. So cool. Good for them. Um, we covered a lot of stuff and I actually am still processing a lot of it. So I'm just going to stay silent for the rest of the evening, which I know is like an anomaly for me, but I thought I would throw that out there.
Well, do any other board members, um, have anything to share? No? All right. Well, then do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, I need to do it so quick.